March sixth, special meeting, call this meeting the whole word. Commissioner Holbrook, you please open some prayer.
Yes, sir. Dear Father God, thanks for today. Thanks for this chance to get together and do things that matter for you. In our community, God, we just pray for wisdom and discernment and a good conversation. So that the people of this community can feel that they are valued by the decisions made, God, and they are valued in your sight and our sight. And we thank you for your son, Jesus God, and the renewal that we see, even though it may be snowing, we know that spring is coming. As we celebrate his resurrection coming up. God, thanks again for today. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Clark, you please call roll.
Judge Cheney. Commissioner Salisbury.
Here.
Commissioner Holbrook.
Here.
Commissioner Stapleton.
Here.
It should be a relatively short meeting. We have three items on the agenda for today. First on the agenda is approval of disaster debris removal and service agreement. So what this is about, for anybody that's watching right now, I know we've had some storms over the past month, two months. We've had some major slippage going on. We've got some bridge damage that needs to be repaired and we've got debris that we need to clean up. Where this debris, this contract is to actually get into the waterways. And start to work on some of these choke points that we have throughout our waterways in Boyd County. Get the debris out, get it cleaned up and get it where this water can flow. I know we had some areas that were flooded. That necessarily haven't been flooded like that before or in a very long time. And we've had back to back events here. So what we're looking at on this contract is this disaster debris removal and disposal service agreement. We put out an RFP for different companies to come in and give us a price. When that RFP come in, there was, looks like eight different companies. And we went, we had, I don't know how many line items we even had on that day. We had a lot, a lot, twenty, twenty-five line items. For debris hauling, for waterway foot, waterway cleaning by linear foot, total debris listed all the way down. So we done that. Put it in a software program, it picked out the lowest price points going all the way down to certain sections. And immediately I got that back and signed a emergency agreement with a not to exceed. A five hundred thousand dollars for looks great services. And that was to get them in, get them mobilized. They're actually currently working now. They're here working in Boyd County. And what this agreement is, is to secure the contract with them, setting a not to exceed at a million dollars. So that means we have a million dollars to get into the waterway, get this debris out. If you have debris on your property from flooding events, to bring them to the right away, company will come get them and we'll dispose of them. Much like we've done in the past. This does not include, this contract with looks great does not include the slip. The slips, we have GSI under contract. I know everybody's probably seen the slip at Boyd County High School. What price did we had on that?
Eight hundred bucks.
Currently, we're at four hundred thousand dollars repairing that slip. And we've identified, how many others? We've identified four additional, so we're gonna end up somewhere between four and eight slips on this. Be well over a million dollars spent on slips. We've got about one point five million dollars in bridge work. And then we've got not to exceed of a million dollars currently right now to get into the waterway and get it cleaned up, get it out of there. So we're gonna go after it. Again, this contract solely for one million dollar not to exceed with looks great services.
And Judge, they'll be, this company will also be doing, conducting all the write-in entries. So that they could get onto someone's property to. To get to the waterway.
That's another very good point on that. So we have easement form. There's a lot of areas that we cannot access these choke points. In, take East Fork as an example, we cannot access from public right of way. So we have an easement form that looks great, has prepared, been reviewed by the county attorney. It's actually on county letterhead, so you'll know it's a hundred percent legit if they, if they do come to you to look at. We're gonna minimize these entry points to as few as possible. So if we could, for instance, get one, but access from that five different areas choke points that we need to, to fix. They're gonna minimize these to keep them, keep the numbers low. Now. Of course, the property owner will have to sign that. I just kinda wanna get it out there that if you, if you see these people or they approach you, this is legit. You can always call, cell phone, call courthouse, talk to us. We're just trying to do all we can to get in there and get this, get these problems taken care of from this event.
And, and being reimbursed by FEMA.
And be reimbursed by FEMA, yes. Which is extremely important. This is what we have the line of credit for. This is why we set it up so many years ago. And many counties statewide have followed suit here. This is a good thing. So let's, lets us get in, keep our backlog down, gets the problem fixed for the people. And then as reimbursement comes in for this disaster, and that gets applied directly to the, to the line of credit. I know this has kinda been a rush process, but everybody on this call knows how I operate when, when these events take place. I like to get my hands on it immediately. I like to go after it immediately. So that's why we've done a disaster. I went ahead and secured a temporary contract, not to exceed five hundred. I'm bringing the precedent is contract in front of fiscal court today to ask a million dollar be the cap that we can comfortably do as of now. That is amenable at, at another point in time, if we find that the slips don't, you know. We've got four million dollars on that line of credit, actually three million, three hundred, three million seven hundred thousand dollars free. So. If we find the slips don't cost as much, we'll have some more money that we can slide over to the waterways to complete our task here, to get this done. So. Does anybody have any questions on this prior to?
I, I got a question. Is, uh, does this include the tributaries to East Fork? You know, like Four Mile Creek going up there? Does it conclude the tributaries that contribute to the amount that, that's going out of East Fork?
Absolutely. So this is not just solely focused on, on East Fork. I use East Fork because it's kind of the main artery, you know, through the county from one end to the other. This includes the tributaries coming into them. Now, a lot of those tributaries are good because we're able to access them, you know, they can reach in there, grab a truck or whatever. We actually don't have to put equipment in the creek to make it happen. We can reach it from the right of way. To answer your question directly, yes, it does, a hundred percent. We actually will have a, I've got a video, we'll post it after this and give you more information, but we'll have a call in number as well. Where citizens can call in if they have something that maybe we can miss. They can call in and report that and we'll go check it out and get it on the list as well. You know, we brought in, immediately brought in debris tech. Debris tech brought in a helicopter. And they flew one end of East Fork to the other. They flew the tributaries everywhere that they could see, identified the major choke points. And now they also backed up, they brought in drone. The drones are flying a lot lower. And obviously not as fast, but they're flying all the tributaries that we've identified problems in, in East Fork. And all that's getting put on a digital map, which is gonna be really neat. So as you open this map. It'll be a map of Boyd County. You'll have points that are, that are indicated. When you click on them, it shows a picture not only of the, the debris that's there. But it also marks coordinates, so they can get in there and, and get it out. Anybody else have any, any questions? Jeremy Dase or Randy, do you have any question?
No questions. Sounds like a good deal.
So I will just ask, just to clarify with people watching, people who are gonna be watching this happen as it, as it goes, maybe in their backyards. The goal of the work is for them to get the debris out, right? They, they are not digging, I wish they could, but they are not allowed to strengthen, we'll say, the creeks, but they're trying to get the debris out, correct?
Correct. However, because we now have this data, the helicopter and the drone data. We hope then we can use that information to apply for additional grants that we would consider to be stream restoration. But you're absolutely right. This work today that you're authorizing is only for items that we can. Seek FEMA reimbursement under disaster four eight six oh. If we're out there and, and there are certain hotspots and there, you know, the equipment's there and we. And we all agree that it's not related to that, to this flood, to disaster four eight six oh. And the county says, hey, we understand, but under this contract, we would like to invoice this separately for these one or two items. That could be on a case by case basis. And there, there may be a few times that, that, that makes sense. But this is not, you know, to clean up the streams, to restore the streams of the entire county is probably much more than a million dollars.
Oh, yeah.
But based on our initial estimate, doing the helicopter ride, you know. Immediately after the event, we thought it was a much higher dollar amount, just based on the, the locations and the types of damages. But then when we got up in the air and, and, and we realized, oh, wait. It, the, it's just not there. Either it went downstream or it's a different type of damage.
And also feel here, with that being said, that, you know, water levels were not. They were not, I'm gonna say not normal or below normal, right? So as, as the waterways continue to drop and get back to normal levels, there may be more than we identified. But one important part to what you're, you're saying there, Jeremy, is sediment. Sediment is a major issue. Sediment, which is all this stuff that I've, I've learned over the past few years, but when you have these log jams and these choke points. That allows the sediment in the water to drop out, which actually lowers the level of your creek. So it takes the original bottom and it'll raise it by whatever that may be, a few feet, which makes the creek a lot shallower than it used to be. So to answer your question, yes, it does need to be done, but it's not, they can't directly relate it to, to this storm. To make it FEMA reimbursable. So what we're saying here is this is not a fix-all. This is not a fix-all. We're still gonna have flooding issues, but this is getting the problems that we, we know exist from this flood. And we're getting the problems out of the way, allowing the creek to go back to its natural flow, its natural state in those areas.
Yeah, this is a fixed sum. And, and there will be some sediment that we're able to remove in this event. And we may be touching on things that we would follow up later, but I'll just go ahead and say it now. You know, we will probably address the items that can be done by land and, and that will, are clearly reimbursable by FEMA. Either side of a pullback or, or certain items that are clearly reimbursable. For items that may be questionable, we may decide that we need to get advanced permission on some of those items. There is going to be some judgment calls, you know. There's some that are absolutely reimbursable and there's, you know, that there's some that we might need to get advanced permission. And so that's something that ER assist will.
We're gonna be clear on that too. It may not be reimbursable. It may not be able to be put on a line of credits, but it still may be the right thing to do. And we're more than willing to step up. If we're there and we have the equipment and we see we have a sediment issue, we go through the proper channels, we get it taken care of, we don't apply directly to this emergency. But we've already got manpower there. Yes, we're gonna go after it. We're gonna fix it. We're gonna make it right. And it's gonna be done in a, in a proper way. So yes, we're. If it's there and needs to be hit, we're gonna, we're gonna get it.
Speaking from the experience side in the, in the room, you know, even in my last time I was in office, we've talked about this forever. And Judge, when you called me, I've, I've, I've said it a thousand times about, you know. This is what we're talking about. I mean, this has direct effects on ever, on our livelihood for every one of our constituents that live south of sixty-four out of town. I mean, there's people that have water in their houses that never have had it in their, in their houses before. And when you called me on this and, and I was excited, honestly, I, I wanted to go further with it, you know, I wanted to dig it out like Additans then back in the. Back in the eighty-four or eighty-five mark, you know, when they dug that out and they dug it out around the mall. I'd like to go south of sixty-four all the way to Lawrence County line and do that same thing all the way through, which I understand that that's a ton of money. But the fact of the matter is, is this is the first thing that, in my recollection, that's, that's ever been done by county government to, to help these people out. Out, out south of sixty-four. And that, that's been a problem. You know, I've talked to, you know, Joe Blair and I've talked to the people about losing their, losing their pastures, losing their farm ground. All the agriculture that's been suffering from, from East Fork and the tributaries. It's, it's been going on for a while and I personally could not be happier, you know, that we're finally making that, that jump. Yeah, it seems like the federal government always gets in our way. Sorry, Laura. And it seems like the state government always gets in our way. We've gone through the conservation district, division of water, trying to get stuff done through the years. And it's always been, you just hit that wall. And Judge, I mean, I, I commend you for stepping out and doing this. I mean. And I know that, you know, changing creek lines and creek things and Laura, you know, having you, you know, pushing us through and helping us with the paperwork and. And, you know, the, the hurdles that we have to climb with the federal government, state government. This is, this is, this, this is great. And I hope to goodness this helps those people and get some relief out, out in the county.
I think, I think it will, Dave. I really do. I think it'll help. I, I don't, I don't believe it's a fix-all. But I think we're, we're on the right track here. There are certain guidelines we have to fall under because we have to make sure that this debris from this flooding event, right? Which we know for a fact exists. We know those choke points are there and we know we're gonna get them cleaned out and automatically that flow of water is gonna help. But we don't need to stop here. We need to make sure that we're from this point forward. We take the data that we gather over the coming months. And we're able to identify these areas that we may find a sediment bank somewhere that's, it may be two thousand feet long. And we need to go through the proper channels, but now we'll have the data to do that. Now we'll have the data to say, hey, we know we have a problem from this point to this point. We're gonna get in there and we're gonna get it fixed. But now we, we were able to provide the data to show why we need to get in there and get it done. Me and you and Jeremy and Pruitt and everybody else on this call, Randy, everybody knows we have issues. But we've never been able to, we can identify visually, but actually getting in there and tracing it and topoing it. We've got to get it, we gotta make that happen. And then we're gonna have all the information we need to take this to the next level. And I do not plan on stopping here. I wanna keep going and get this plane from one end to the other and the tributaries that, that come into it. But this is a, this is a great start. This is the, the, the answer for all, but this is a great start.
The, 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 um, this is, this is a question for Mark. I know we've talked about retention ponds. And, and things like that. I mean, could this be part of that plan, you know, as far as maybe identifying that? I, I don't even know if that, after we get this cleaned out and everything, if that might be something we still need to look at or maybe it might be something else. I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I'm not the expert in the field, but, but, you know, that's been talked about since I took office this last time. Matter of fact. That's the first time I'd ever heard it talked about, you know, in the twenty plus years that I've been, you know, involved with the county government stuff. So. You know, to me, it sounds like a great idea, but I just don't know.
Yep. We won't be able to build retention ponds. Under this grant or under this pot of money. However, we'll be able to take the data from this disaster. Including all that drone data and we'll, we'll do it before and after. And then use that to help identify the areas. And then one of the next items up is. Is really a tasking for you to tell me to do that under.
If it means.
One of the questions people have is, if we clean these creeks out. And remove the debris and the water rushes faster, could it, it may flood other areas because it's getting out too fast.
Well, I think, I think the whole concept there is. That's why we take East Fork as, as main artery, right? So. We start in the direction it flows. We get in there and we get the choke points as they come up. So you do this from one end to the other. And I don't, I don't see an issue because you're not, you're not removing one choke point to allow the water to move faster just to run into the next one. What you're gonna do here is get all of them, get all the choke points that allow the water to move at the constant pace all the way through. But I don't, I don't think we're creating an additional problem because we're not removing, we're not going into East Fork. And I'm using it as an example because it's a main artery, but we're not going into East Fork and removing one and leaving fifty. You know, we're not allowing that section to speed up. We're allowing that constant flow to be there from one end to the other.
Okay.
Question, Randy.
Very good question.
Yeah.
All right. We get a motion in a second to approve disaster debris removal disposal service agreement with looks great services with an NTE of one million dollars. No mode.
Second.
Any discussion? Clark, you please go roll.
Mr. Stapleton.
Yes.
Mr. Holbrook.
Yes.
Mr. Salisbury.
Yes.
Judge Cheney.
Yes. I need to reorganize the next step. I need to switch them. I need to move contract agreement for ER assist. I need to move it next. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Stapleton.
Yes.
Mr. Holbrook.
Yes.
Mr. Salisbury.
Yes.
Judge Cheney.
Yeah.
So this, this contract is the same format as previous contracts. It just specifically identifies this disaster. So for reimbursement purposes for FEMA or FHWA or NRCS or whatever grant we're gonna apply for. It'll, it'll be cleaner for them to understand it's from this event. This contract, the contract itself has a not to exceed of a million dollars on that. I, I don't think we're gonna get near that, but also I don't know what grants we're gonna apply for in the next. Eight to eighteen month, or six to eighteen months. So I wanted to allow enough room on that to allow. For all the reimburse, all, all the grant activities that would come out of this, this flooding event. The, the task orders that are, are essentially subsets of the contract and that would be next. But this contract itself is just. It is, the procurement has been met, just like all of our past contracts. And this is just. The, the long document that has all the required FEMA clauses and says I won't use the Department of Homeland Security. Logo, the Clean Water Act, the, it, it just has all the required clauses that are needed.
Get a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clark, you please go roll.
Mr. Stapleton.
Yes.
Mr. Holbrook.
Yes.
Mr. Salisbury.
Yes.
Judge Cheney.
Yes. Next one move to the task orders. I'll put these individually. The first task order is disaster response and recovery services. Senior back end, it says right below, it's got the bullet points, VR assist may perform summer all following task as directed by Boyd County Fiscal Court. Funding development management review, support filing tracker costs, development and damage description scope work. This NTE said five hundred thousand. This is paid for disaster response recovery service.
Some of that.
Yeah, we're gonna be, there's three or four of them. Get motion in a second. I thought we had.
So moved. Second.
That is definitely an option.
Without order.
Clark, please go roll.
Mr. Stapleton.
Yes.
Mr. Holbrook.
Yes.
Mr. Salisbury.
Yes.
Judge Cheney.
The next one is debris monitoring. This is debris monitoring, debris monitoring software, monitoring documentation, monitoring accordance. For not to exceed two hundred thousand. Can you get a motion in a second? So moved.
Perfect.
Any discussion? Clark, you please go roll.
Mr. Stapleton.
Yes.
Mr. Holbrook.
Yes.
Mr. Salisbury.
Yes.
Judge Cheney.
Uh, next one with not to exceed two hundred thousand is hazard mitigation. This is grant development for hazard mitigation grant, funding development management review and focused advice. And this is support filing and tracking of cost. Very important one out here. This one here is, it will be all documentation that we need to apply to FEMA to send back in. So get a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clark, you please go roll.
Mr. Stapleton.
My phone's freezing up for some reason.
Sounds like a yes. Is that a yes, Randy?
It's just phrase it up, it's a little bit of another, but yeah.
Okay, I don't worry.
Commissioner Holbrook.
Yes.
Mr. Salisbury.
Yes.
Judge Cheney.
Yes. Next is the last one out of the list for not to exceed NRCS emergency project for rem services. This is funding development management review, focused advice, support filing, tracking costs. This is your last, your worship program. Get motion in a second. Randy. So moved.
Second.
And Randy's back. Hey Randy, yes or no, real quick?
It freezes up and I have to turn it off to get it to come back.
Go with the, yes or no? Hey Randy.
Yes.
Give me a thumbs up or thumbs down. Give me a thumbs up. Yeah, we're good. Um, and this is just.
Yeah, that was, but I don't know that you took a vote on that one. Is that?
Yeah.
On the NRCS? Okay.
Yeah, we voted on that one, right? The last one. Oh.
No, we got.
Sorry.
We got Randy's vote. I didn't get anyone else. Commissioner Holbrook.
Yes.
Commissioner Salisbury.
Yes.
Judge Cheney.
Yes. Got Randy.
There we go.
So that is, I believe that's it.
Yeah, unless the court wants to talk about any hazard mitigation that we immediately want to go after, maybe it is the retention or.
Oh, yeah. So I'll list that, all of that kinda segue back to what Dave, what he was talking about. Laura, if you want to touch on one of this.
Right. So I, I know lots of hazard mitigation areas, but from the commissioners, if you would like to. Message me or direct me to prioritize certain hazard mitigation areas. I know previously we talked about Chiners and Alhassa.
And what happened there? Where do we go on that?
Well, we, I, we kinda need to go back into it. So before that was on speculation, but now that I have a task order, yeah, I, I need you to tell me. Yeah, I, I need you to tell me both be ahead.
Yeah, I think everybody's good with that. I think when we was looking at Alhassa as a, uh, retention area, it was based off what she's saying, based off of speculation. And now that speculation turned into confirmation. Uh, so we have all the documentation that we need, or we will have.
We did cost estimates and that cost estimate, um, was much higher than we estimated and kind of died on the vine for a second, but we'll revive it back.
That was a portion that Alhassa, we're gonna have to pay a portion, huh?
Well, yes, yes. So we were to do the design portion so that we could have the shovel ready project.
Yes.
Um, at that point, we wanted, uh, or the court wanted to have, um, Alhassa to pay a portion of that design fee.
Okay.
And I never got that fully executed, but I think, um, it's time to go back to them, especially since I understand they have flooded twice.
Yes.
Um, since then.
So I think, I think retention ponds are, I think they're a good thing. Uh, I think we've identified some areas that we thought would be adequate for this, but it turned out not to be so. But, uh, we think Alhassa is definitely one. Uh, so we'd like, we'll get back in contact with the, uh, with the shriners out there. That's a, it, like I said, go in from speculation, confirmation changes things a lot there. Now, you got a question on that?
It wasn't a question. It's kind of a statement because, because, uh, and just like I said, that we, we've talked about this. Uh, I've talked to Pruitt about his stuff and, and this is gonna kinda put some people in, in a hiatus for it. But we own property that we could use for a retention pond. We would just have to relocate, you know, what I'm talking about is the optimist field. And if we relocated the optimist people and the baseball, you know, to, uh, wherever. I mean, that's, you know, we, we, we could probably do both. And, and that's property that we already own, that we could possibly slide a retention pond on that property. I don't know how it works in the grand scheme of things. Uh, I, you know, I hate to put that out there because, you know, I'm a baseball guy.
You're, you're right. You're actually right. Not like you're reallocating fields, relocating fields wouldn't be an issue. I think identifying and making sure that that property would suit as a retention pond. Because like, if you were looking at it thinking, well, when it floods at five feet underwater, so yeah, it'd be perfect, but they look at a totally different aspect on that. So I think we can put it on the list to have it looked at and go from there. Absolutely.
Yeah, we, we thought in the past, we identified some great locations. And when the engineers ran the numbers, they were like, well, that will reduce it by an eighth of an inch. Like, well.
Yeah, it's talking two million bucks for an eighth of an inch, right? So, you know, we, we wanna make sure we identify something that will.
But if it's an eighth of an inch over all of southern Boyd County, that's a better, a lot, a lot of water. Yeah. That is high.
We, we've got that area identified now, so we'll, uh, we'll get it, uh.
And it, it's likely, so in the past, when we were kinda looking at that, it was, um, speculation. But also with the county particularly not really putting any money upfront, you know, it was just a grant opportunity. Probably what I'm gonna come back to you saying, these are the, I need to be done now. And you may have to spend some, spend some money. So I'm just, uh, tempering you for that, for what I probably am gonna say in a month or two when I come back.
I understand completely. And what, and what?
Reason not to.
Right. Cause I don't know that we have.
I froze up again.
I think, I think they did.
I think they froze. Not you, Randy.
I'm back.
I'm gonna start sending carrier pigeons. You're good, Randy.
You're good, Randy. We're just waiting.
I see Dave, but I don't hear him.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Well, we're having some, uh, internet problems here. So, uh, we'll identify those points. Charles, pass this one through and that. So we'll do that. We'll get back with her. Uh, does anybody else have anything?
Not allowed to talk about anything else.
Right. Get a motion to the jury?
So moved.
Second.
All right. I'm pretty sure all everybody's in favor. Thank y'all very much.
See you guys Tuesday.
See you guys Tuesday.
Yep.